Good afternoon, everyone. Today is February 7th and the time is 1:00 PM. Has the lobby been cleared? Yes? Yes? Okay, yes. We're here today for our school board briefing meeting. Welcome. Does the superintendent have anything he wishes to change on the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. Going to go ahead. We have one item today on the briefing. And the first item is school leadership development. And we have Director Harrell. Welcome.
Good afternoon, chairpersons, board, Dr. Bernier, and Attorney Deputy Bruno. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with you today. This presentation will provide an overview of school-based leadership development. And if you look at our agenda, we're going to talk about the purpose of the Leadership Development Program, the leadership pipeline, teacher leadership development, aspiring leader development, school leader development, and then high reliability schools. Sorry, should have done this at the beginning. I'm a little nervous. I brought with me to my right, I was going, let me just read my notes and get that part over with. I brought with me today my assistant director, Dr. David Sanon, and the Director of Professional Development, Dr. Helen Martin. I apologize for that. So that's perfect. Takes us to my next slide. Our leadership development programs are focused on recruitment, retention, and results. These connect to the strategic plan success factors of continuous improvement, family and community engagement, student achievement, and of course, workforce success. Beginning with recruitment, we prioritize identification of leaders within the organization and seek talent from outside of the district to support our district vision of being a world-class school system. When we talk about retention, we refer to the culture of a school. We constantly ask the question, how can we influence leaders to develop the knowledge, skills, and disposition needed to successfully lead our schools? Giving students and staff the opportunity then to reach their highest personal potential. Results. Of course, our goal is to continue to engage our learners in meaningful and relevant development activities that will ultimately increase, will ultimately support increased student achievement. Although we collect survey data to drive our programs and continually refine the content of our programs, ultimately, student achievement is the bar by which we will measure our work. The research is clear, second only to classroom teachers. Classroom teachers' leadership contributes to what students learn at a school. And Dr. Sanon is going to move us forward in the discussion.
Good afternoon, everyone. So to understand leadership development in the school district of Lee County is to understand a system of programs and activities designed specifically to strengthen the impact of the leaders right here in the school district of Lee County. Over the last eighteen months, with the help of a leadership consultant from the Wallace Foundation, we have met with and learned from some of the largest school districts in the United States who have successful leadership development programs. The relationships that have been established over the last eighteen months have proven to be instrumental in the leadership pipeline that we're going to share with you today. All right. So again, taking what we learned from across the country, we went to work refining our existing programs and created new programs to support the development of our aspiring and current administrators right here in the school district. The leadership continuum shown here provides a visual of the leadership pipeline for school-based leadership development. We go ahead and begin at the left. We have the identification and selection of leaders, which is critically important at all stages of the pipeline. As we continue to develop a pipeline of diverse leaders who reflect the student body, we actively meet with aspiring leaders to help guide them through the action steps that they may need to take to realize their leadership goals. From the selection of mentors for our new teachers to the selection of school principals, it's important that the individuals who are selected for these roles demonstrate the knowledge, skills, and abilities required for successful leadership. Continuing through the pipeline, you'll see that we have formal programs in place to support teacher, aspiring leader, assistant principal, and principal development as these individuals progress through their leadership journey. I also want to point out the role of the assistant principal and principal pools in the leadership pipeline. These pools require participants to demonstrate their leadership abilities through real-world tasks and the submission of what we call impact evidence of effectiveness. And these are artifacts demonstrating the candidate's proficiency with the Florida Principal Leadership Standards. And we could literally spend all day talking about all the programs that we support in our district around leadership development, and more importantly, the people that make these programs possible. But since our time is limited, we're going to go ahead and touch on to some of the programs that are supported in our department. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Martin.
The leadership journey for teachers begins within the classroom. Classroom teachers are afforded several opportunities to make an impact on their school. Some supplemental opportunities for teachers to extend their influence within the day-to-day operations of their school include: apples mentor teacher, cooperating teacher, extracurricular activity sponsor, grade-level department chair, and leading and learning team member. Some additional volunteer opportunities vary site by site, but might include the opportunity for teachers to serve on a school leadership team or participate in the school's Sunshine Committee. Professional development directly supports apples new teacher mentors through clinical educator training. Apples mentors provide job-embedded support and coaching to the new teachers within their schools. As teachers grow and express a desire to lead, there are several opportunities available that do not require them to leave the classroom.
All right. And now we'll go ahead and highlight two formal teacher leadership roles that are supported by our department. So starting on the left, we have our Dean of Students. And there are currently forty-six deans who are responsible for supporting the attendance, behavior, and classroom success of the forty thousand students that they serve. Deans participate in monthly trainings on topics relevant to their work. And as you can see from the pictures, they're visible and actively engaged with the students in their schools. The experience gained in the dean role serves as a great preparation for aspiring leaders who seek to become assistant principals in our district.
Another opportunity for teachers to serve in a formal leadership role in their school is the role of peer collaborative teacher. Peer collaborative teachers are in place in many of our Title I schools. Peer collaborative teachers teach students directly for part of the day and provide job-embedded professional development opportunities to their colleagues for the remainder of the day. The job-embedded professional development opportunities might look retrieving and analyzing data. It could also look like providing coaching and then job-embedded professional development sessions. A recent job-embedded professional development session facilitated by the peer collaborative teachers took place in our BSI schools. Within the BSI schools, the peer collaborative teachers served as a model classroom for the many new teachers in those schools, as well as teachers on the additional grade levels. And the teachers who participated and observed the model classroom really had the opportunity to take on the lens of what it might look like through a trained observer for the state walkthrough structure and protocol. After the training, the teachers who participated in the model classroom said they felt relieved and less fear for the upcoming state visit, but also they felt better prepared to implement the strategies in their classroom that would directly impact students. Because peer collaborative teachers directly teach students for part of the day, they are viewed as credible resources and support for the teachers in which they support. The peer collaborative teacher role allows our best teachers to remain in the classroom, directly impacting students while also positively influencing the school leadership team. Principals observe that teachers and students who work directly with peer collaborative teachers make improvements. Although the state tools for progress monitoring have changed in the past few years, incremental improvements in student achievement for the grade level and classrooms directly supported by peer collaborative teachers this year can be observed.
All right. Now we're going to take a moment to talk about aspiring leader development. So for aspiring leaders in our assistant principal pool, our leadership experiences for aspiring leader development program, also known as LEED, has shown to be beneficial to the development of our future leaders. LEED is a robust, year-long program that prepares aspiring leaders to become highly effective instructional leaders who are equipped to seamlessly transition into the assistant principal role. The LEED program is supported by assistant principals in our principal pool who provide mentoring and training to the aspiring leaders. We call this the Leaders Leading Leaders approach. LEED consists of three main components. LEED courses, which are courses and blackboard created to build knowledge around the leadership principles in the school district of Lee County. In the courses, participants learn about key district policies and apply what they learned through job-embedded activities. For example, participants learn about safety drills and then have the opportunity to shadow an administrator in their building during a drill to provide that real-world perspective. Additionally, participants reflect on their experiences, which helps to deepen their understanding of the assistant principal role. Next, we have LEED trainings, which are held right here in the district office. Training topics align to the Florida Principal Leadership Standards. And since they're facilitated by our assistant principals, they provide our aspiring leaders with real-world, again, insight into the role. And finally, the same LEED partners also serve as mentors and facilitate job-shadow days where aspiring leaders spend two days shadowing their mentor to gain insight into the full experience of what it's like to be an assistant principal in the school district of Lee County. We launched Cohort One in February of last year and have since had eight of our new assistant principals come from our LEED program. The remaining twenty-eight participants completed the program in December and have become a part of what we call LEED 2.0, which provides participants with ongoing access to leadership development activities. And now I'm going to turn it back over to Mrs. Harrell, who's going to speak on school leader induction.
Once appointed as an assistant principal or principal in a school, a formal induction process begins. New school leaders participate in an orientation to receive an overview of the induction programs and what is expected of themselves and of their new mentor. The induction programs for assistant principals and principals, if you see, include three key components. There's leader mentoring. So all new assistant principals and principals are matched with a trained mentor who provides support with the day-to-day functions of school-based leadership. Think of the mentors as thought partners in the work of leadership. Professional learning. Leaders must be learners in order to deepen their knowledge. For our new principals, there's a concierge team support, which is something new for this year. During this time, our new principals, their mentors, and representatives from the district departments come together to answer any questions they may have or discuss any needs of the school. So during this time, it's open season, if you will. All the departments sit out there and they have the opportunity to gather their questions prior to that meeting and come and ask and get answers while they're there. Of course, we always begin with a team builder to create a stronger connection between the school and the district, so our newest administrators feel they have a partner to reach out to at all times. That district-school partnership is so important to the successful running of a school. Similarly, our new assistant principals participate in monthly meetings designed to support assistant principals with demands of the role. Training is centered around research-based practices and just-in-time district-specific initiatives. New administrators are trained by the content experts here in the district. For example, Dave Newland provides training for safety. Bonnie McFarland provides the sessions on insurance and benefits. So whoever the expert is down here in the department, that's who leads the training. And finally, leader coaching. Coaching is focused on a problem of practice with support from an experienced leader. Administrators participate in a goal-setting session and they utilize the PVSA cycle to go through. So each month, they're working on a new problem of practice. Here, we'd like for you to meet some of our new leaders this year. At the conclusion of the board meeting tonight, we will have eight new principals this year and twenty-one new assistant principals participating in our programs. Here, they're meeting their mentors for the first time. And with any, as with any program, we always begin with team building because it's important to build that trust so that when they're reaching out and talking to them, they know this is the person that's going to help me get through this first year and be successful at the end. We do have some ongoing development programs that I'd like to talk to you about. So data chats, you've probably heard a little bit about this from Dr. Bernier. But all school principals will have the opportunity to participate in a data chat. Some of our assistant principals have also been present at those chats. During this meeting, they talk about the academic performance of their students and identify next steps focusing on specific groups of students. Departments are there, I've been sitting in all these meetings as well, to answer any questions that they may have or provide some data points. For example, they talk to them about what is their attendance looking like at their school? And if it's, if the attendance is rising, they talk about what are you doing that's made it successful? If not, what are you considering doing and what support could we offer? And truly, it's also a celebration of the work that principals and administrators have been doing at the school level. Learning walks. This is a site-based visit where staff from academic services walk with school-based administrators through the classrooms to collect data related to the teaching in the classroom, including the rigor of the work and the engagement of the students and the essential questions that are being asked. Monthly meetings. Assistant principals attend curriculum meetings and meetings with the student services side of the house. Principals meet each month to learn with their colleagues and discuss what academic performance should look like in the classrooms. In the last two principal meetings that were held, they actually had to bring artifacts based on a benchmark to talk about what does that really look like? Was, is the rigor there in the piece of work that you captured from one of your teams? So that's a new, a new piece for us. And I think it's been very successful and the conversations have been very rich around there. Supervisor support. Our principal supervisors, of course, are always available for our new principals and they visit on a regular basis with their schools. We also have a principal coach in professional development who visits our schools and meets with the new principals every other week along with our, we have two of those. They check in with them. We give them a monthly calendar from our department that says these are the things that you should be working on, like a little cheat sheet. Because when you're a new principal, you have so much on your plate. We want to make sure that we help them focus that work. In our BSI schools, you heard about this in the presentation you had last week. We have two administrators that come out of professional development with a responder schedule. So they go in and allow those principals uninterrupted time to go into classrooms and really ensure that effective teaching is focused for our students. And so they go in and literally take their radios and they respond to whatever's going on during that time. And then the last thing I want to talk about on this list is summer leadership. This is really an important two days of work. We'll have it again coming up soon in June. But each summer, we bring all of our leaders together. We learn as a group, right? And so last year, our focus was on PLCs, professional learning communities. We took all, all of the principals, or if they were not available during that time, we took their assistant principal for that training. And then also in high reliability schools, that's really our focus. And as I said, we'll have that again coming up in June. It comes by very quickly. And so summer leadership is a way for us to just really dig in and continue as a learner. So we've just shared some examples of professional learning that is available to our school-based leaders to help them improve their leadership skills. I'm excited to share a professional learning initiative that allows our teacher leaders and administrators to work together to look at student outcomes and create systems for student success. Dr. Martin?
A system is a coordinated plan. The high reliability schools framework identifies twenty-five essential leadership actions for school leaders to focus on to create a school-wide plan for student achievement. The twenty-five actions are broken into five levels, as you can see on the slide. The five levels are represented in a hierarchy. The first level, safe, supportive, and collaborative culture, is foundational to the day-to-day operations of a school. Without that, student learning will not occur at high levels. The second level of the framework focuses on effective teaching in every classroom because teacher quality is the number-one factor influencing student achievement. Level three, a guaranteed and viable curriculum, ensures that all students have the opportunity to engage with rigorous benchmarks on a path towards proficiency. Levels one, two, and three are foundational to a successful school. Levels four and five are aspirational and really reflect rarefied air. Level four, simply put, includes identifying student progress towards the benchmarks and then communicating that progress with all stakeholders. And level five is an innovative approach to education that allows students to progress through the curriculum based on mastery of concepts versus their age. Over the past two years, forty principals and a hundred and twenty teachers participated in the High Reliability Schools Academy. The academy represents six days of learning that drives a leader and their leadership team towards deeper collaboration. Participants are not passive learners during this academy. Between Sessions One and Two, leaders send out surveys to their students, to their parents, to their faculty and staff, to measure their perception of the school culture. Throughout the remainder of the academy, leadership teams work together to create action plans. Although the high reliability schools framework outlines the leadership actions that should be in place, school leaders still have the flexibility to select the strategies that are most appropriate and unique to their school environment. Leadership actions in Level One focus on school safety, ways to collect stakeholder input, the celebration of students and teachers, and the organization of teachers into collaborative teams. Input, celebrations, and collaboration positively influence school culture. The culture of a school cannot be understated. As the culture determines the success or failure of any strategy, a leader chooses to implement for school improvement. I am proud to announce that our earlier adopters and each member of our High Reliability Schools Academy Cohort One recently achieved Level One certification. Level One certification means that each school has implemented systems to address school culture. They've not only implemented the systems, now they've collected data on those systems to ensure that they're having the desired impact. They've monitored the data over time, and as the data indicated changes were necessary, they made those changes to correct them in real time. To achieve Level One certification, the schools submitted artifacts that included written documents, videos, student data in order to be reviewed by an outside expert. Level One certification creates the conditions for student achievement and serves as a foundation for a high return on investment over time. Our Level One certified schools were recognized last month at the High Reliability Schools Summit in San Antonio, Texas. During this summit, teachers and leaders had the opportunity to collaborate and learn from experts. Our Level One certified schools are really ready to move on to Levels Two and Three, and they're ready to support their colleagues in the subsequent cohorts of the High Reliability Schools Academy. It is our hope that all schools will achieve Level One certification and our district can be recognized as a safe, supportive, and collaborative district. But we know the work does not stop at school culture. But we recognize culture is the cornerstone for any school improvement effort. We strive to create highly reliable systems so that the education of each student is not left to chance. Within a high-reliable system, every educator improves and every child has the opportunity to find success.
You've heard today about leadership opportunities available to classroom teachers, assistant principals, and principals, and how they come together to impact a whole school climate to ensure each student reaches his or her highest potential. Today, I've provided for you a copy of the book, Leading a High Reliability School, which is the text that all administrators have used during the last two years of training as we've embarked. And just to give you a little cheat sheet, there's a card, Slide Nine, that Dr. Martin referred to about the five levels. It gives you that with the indicators if you just want to not have to read everything in the book and you would just like to have the cheat sheet. So we thank you for your time. We welcome superintendent comments and for discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Harrell.
Thank you, Dr. Harrell, Dr. Martin, Dr. Sanon, thank you for this presentation. I think it's important for us, and thank you for making some of the connections to the previous presentations the board has had. So some of the leaders that you've recently been able to be exposed to and the work that they're doing at their school building is related to this work. So if you, if you think overall, when you think about beginning with the end in mind, what the leadership development team has presented to you today is utilizing the high reliability schools framework, the expectations that begin as a building block with climate and culture, all the way through to competency-based education. That's what we're trying to accomplish at the very end, that our school buildings, one at a time, one leader at a time, one opportunity at a time, will continue to progress through those stages. Just like when we met as a board down in the pit, when the director of the Florida School Boards Association said, "You can't rush form, norm, storm, perform." You can't really rush past the first building block, which is a safe and collaborative culture. It's an extremely important building block, and that's where that Level One certification really comes in. Once certified in that area, we, the organization that helps support our leaders in this knows that the school is ready to progress into those further steps. The ultimate, I think, being questions that we should always ask. Why does a student have to wait in a year of Algebra I if they can demonstrate the competencies in Algebra I? And that's an area which we are going to begin to explore at a deeper level at our virtual school, because our virtual school is not set on seat time. It's based upon competency, and when a student can demonstrate and pass the final exam, they are allowed to move on to the next legitimate course. We have to think maybe outside the box for leadership development moving forward. I do also appreciate you going back and doing sort of the nuts and bolts of how we identify our leaders on the instructional side of the house. I want also to just make a comment that we don't want to eliminate other employees who need some of the same leadership development training. Dr. Martin, Dr. Sanon, Dr. Harrell, and I have had those conversations because we want a gentleman who works, or a lady who works on the grounds crew, who then becomes a supervisor of the people who work on the grounds crew, to have some leadership development before taking on those roles and responsibilities. The reason for that is being a really great grounds person is not as, not the same as leading a team of four or five people who also help you do that work. It's, it's good that you have the skill, but you also have to be able to possess the leadership opportunities and the abilities to help people understand the why of what you're asking them to do and improve the quality of our organization. Same's true in food service, same's true in transportation. We have to also look at the other side of our employee house and make sure that we're developing those leaders as well, more to come on that. So I think the most important thing that you, you heard today in terms of the overall umbrella is we are working on a way to identify leaders as early as possible in the pipeline who have an interest. We do have, if you will, an exit ramp. It's not a permanent decision, but we have a way for teachers to begin to rise to leadership and still stay in the classroom. That's the PCT. It's an incredible opportunity for those educators who want to stay rooted in making a difference every day in a school building, not to just have to choose to become an assistant principal or a principal. They have a manner to move forward in leadership and still remain grounded in the classroom. Then finally, I think when we think about assistant principalship and principalship development, we continue to work around the overall framework of, of this particular item, with the caveat, this is still work to do on a whole nother side of the organization. So I, I, this is a generalized overview. There should be some really specific questions you have. The team is ready as best we can, and where if we don't have a specific answer, we will research that and get back to you. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you, guys, for your presentation. Just want to remind everyone, per, per board protocol, that we should strive for four minutes for our initial comments, two minutes for follow-up, and a total of 10. Do we have anyone that has any comments or questions at this time? Mr. Persson?
I see we have 11 schools that achieved the Level One. How many schools were participating in the program to get to that level? Were there, just trying to, and where are they?
Right. Cohort one, the entire cohort did it. The entire cohort. Cohort two is working on Level One certification. Three and four are still in their training, if you will. I'm a pretty good facilitator. So some follow-up phone calls to make sure that they had what they needed, and in some cases, connecting them. Dr. Phillips Luster is the person who went first, if you will, through Level One certification. So she's been a fantastic mentor to the other schools and showing them this can be done. And again, as Dr. Martin discussed, everybody's artifacts, of course, would be different because every school is different. But so between the mentorship and then the great training and the ability to work together in those sessions, everybody in the cohort made it.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Ms. Jordan?
Oh, thank you. So based on, it wasn't my question, but based on that, so we are looking at all of our schools achieving this is the goal under your leadership and everybody's, right?
Yes, that's the goal.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, oh, Ms. Morgan, go ahead. If there wasn't questions, I was gonna go ahead, but go ahead, Ms. Morgan.
New principal induction. It's been my observation during my time on the board that the biggest problem we have with new principals is an incompatible fit between the principal put in a school and the culture. And a drive to, the principal feels obligated to make transformative change in order to elevate the, the school's achievement. And you're talking about, first, your focus was on data, and then you talked about culture. I'm, I'm just wondering how you, and you, with new principals, you go through all of this mentoring, coaching, whatever, but how do you ascertain what is happening in the school as a result of that principal? What is impacting, you know, how do the teachers feel about what's taking place? Who identifies lead participants? Do people volunteer? Are names brought forward by a principal or assistant principal or dean? I assume it's a one-year program. I'm assuming it's like the highly reliable schools where there's an evaluation at the conclusion of what people have learned and, and not learned in the program. Um, let's see. Oh, it's interesting to me that the ones who completed Level One are middle school and elementary school. There's no high schools. So in your 40 schools in, who are at some point in the, in the process, you know, what is the mix of elementary, middle, and high? Because I, you know, I, I'm aware that at some high schools, there are, there are issues. And I think the thing that concerns me most, and the thing that's, that's toughest, is when you're changing a culture, it's going to take three to five years to change the culture. And you will have an expectation that your leaders are going to accomplish certain things. And this sort of circles back to my original comment. How do you get, and, and there will be teachers who will jump on board and understand exactly what's going on and why, and there will be teachers who will follow, and then there will be teachers who resist. So, you know, what's the level of support, or how do you identify a way to help principals work with staff that, that are not supportive of, of what's taking place? Because I think that has also been a problem, particularly with teachers who have been here a long time and seen change every five years, and it's going to blow over. So those are my comments and questions. Thank you.
So I'm gonna let Lynn handle that last one because she would have the most on-the-ground along with Dr. Sanon and Dr. Martin regarding that aspect of how do we help a principal work through the challenges of working sometimes with inexperienced faculty? But let's go back to the beginning of those questions. One of the first was about selection. When I got here, with all respect to the former administrations, I believe that principal selection was kind of done in what statistically is referred to as a black box. The state uses a black box, for instance, in determining achievement levels. We know that the data of our students goes into a black box, and out comes levels, one, two, three, four, and five. We know something about the statistical process in that box, but it's, it's not completely transparent because the exams are not all transparent. I think we did some of that in selection of our leaders here in the school district of Lee County. At Lynn's direction and with my support and some of my direction, we now, with a principal and with an assistant principal, begin with a leadership profile. What we ask for faculty and for parents to say is what are you looking for in a new leader? Very important for me to say publicly, not who are you looking for, but what? You know, are you looking for that listener? Are you looking for a transformational leader? Are you looking for someone to hold on to systems that are already in place because things are working in a school building? Our job is then to advertise and find those individuals and ask them questions related to their leadership style, and then allow those teachers and parents to participate in the selection process. We believe we're making some headway. It's not a perfect system yet. Lynn and I were refining it just last week. But we're making some headway with the decision of a principal or an assistant principal coming to a school is not so much a guess anymore. People at least know the input. They make recommendations, usually up to two. We don't tell them to put in a one and two, or an A or a B. Just two names to move forward from the selection committee for the superintendent and the deputy superintendent to consider. We do with Lynn and an additional member usually re-interview those people, make some determinations based upon what the community profile was, and who best fits and who's most ready. So that's a very long answer to principal selection, but it's the beginning of it. In terms of the success of a principal, you look, to me, you look at two different things. You look at the feel of a building, and that sometimes has resulted in the surveys that are done on school buildings on an annual basis. As we get ready for the Cognia credit, district-wide accreditation for our schools, we'll get additional climate surveys from students and parents and other community members. So you get both a feel, but there's other data. Part of it is what Mr. Dodig and I spend time talking about, which is retention and turnover data. That's another health of a school building. And then quite honestly, you're all very excellent at providing me with opportunities for leadership. When certain constituents ask for information about their school or tell us things that are occurring, that gets a superintendent's attention. And then there's the data piece. Clearly, on, at least on an annual basis, and looking at PM one, two, and three, the third one being in our current system, the one that's most accountable to us, the data also shows us how a principal and their staff are working together because we should see a movement in student achievement. I think I have had some impact in lead participant, and I'll turn it to Lynn. What I've asked David and Dr. Helen Martin, sorry, David, Dr. Sanon and Helen Martin to look at is who has talent? By casting as wide a net as possible, I would rather draw in more candidates and start with a larger pool as we look towards developing leaders and have them self-select. So in the past, organizations I've worked with, including this one, has said things, "You must have a master's degree." Sometimes there's just a talented person who wants to determine if they want to go get their master's degree in ed. leadership. They should be a part. And so our principals help identify, I know Dr. Martin and Dr. Sanon are always on the lookout for talent, was one of the things I had a discussion with the principal at Franklin Park today. Talk to me about some of your rock stars. Who are they? Can we go see them? Talk to me about a teacher who's brand-new, is still working. So you get a feel, and you say to them, have, you know, have they ever expressed an idea? We have to find a way of surfacing those names and look at the diversity of our pool because our kids have to reflect, our pool has to reflect the diversity of our children. So that's just a little bit of that. As to the number of schools and a high school and who's in the pipeline, I would have to defer to Lynn for some of those questions. And I would ask that the team, we can follow up in writing with some of that for the entire board so that you have not only the information you need, but the documentation to hold the four of us, as well as our deputy superintendent accountable.
Sorry, I have to put my glasses off to say this little red light. We do have high schools that have come along. The very first cohort were the people that honestly were the most excited after the training that we were doing online. So they are the, they were like, okay, we're in, we're in, as soon as I sent out the message, who would like to participate? Right now, I think Cohort Three is meeting in training rooms A and B, and I believe there are three or four high schools that are participating. So there is a good mix across the district, size of school, middle school, elementary, middle school, elementary, high, and K-8 schools. We even have some K-8 schools. So you'll find that it's a good mixture. So the first four cohorts, these are the people that signed up earlier. And then the question that I was asked about, how are all the schools going to do it? We're gonna have four more cohorts going, so I will be sending out the come on and join me, or picking up the phone and encouraging them to join me. How's that? Because this work, to your, to the question that you asked, Mrs. Morgan, I want to answer it this way. The beauty of this HRS system or this framework, we were actually just discussing it because we thought you would ask us this question, is that it won't matter necessarily who you put in the seat if the system is already in place. And the teachers understand, this is how we do the work. And the, the, one of the things I love the most about our model is that teachers are part, so it's a five-person team that goes through the training. It is required to be the principal, not the assistant principal, which, you know, sometimes they're very, very busy, but I said, if you're gonna make the commitment, it starts with you, the principal. Although you have great assistant principals, the face of that work has to be you. So right, our current model is it's a principal, three teacher leaders, and then somebody from the district actually sits on a team. I was paired with Bayshore. I can't remember, Dr. Sanon, you were with?
Orangewood.
Orangewood?
Lexington.
And Lexington. And so we thought it was important also that our district staff have an understanding of the work and how they can still be a part of that work, right? It doesn't matter that we're here and, and they're out in a school building. It's a great partnership. And so what would happen is if the principal was replaced, they have that leadership in, right there. They know the indicators they have to work on, and as they move up through the ranks, what we have found, my favorite is, is Mr. Miller is just a riot. He is so excited about everything. He's the principal at Cypress Lake Middle. Everything is exciting to him. And it's, we were barely finished with Level One. He's like, I'm ready, let's do two, let's do two. Because, he said, Lynn, I want, that's what I want to see. That's the end game, effective teaching in every single classroom, right? And so as we move up through the levels, we'll have strong systems in place that will be able to continue to move forward. And so although you may put a new personality in there, if they will trust the systems that we have in place and that everybody, the framework everybody's working under, can you imagine how amazing that will be? That we're verifying, it doesn't matter which school in Lee County you attend, with high reliability, we know all of these factors are in place for Level One certification. And then even better, Level Two, Level Three. And so I think that answers
Yeah, it does.
...that, that question. You, you had so many, so if I forgot one...
No, no, it just takes a while. My concern, you know, continues to be, it takes a while for that culture to be embedded, for a new principal to come in, and for people to have the confidence that that structure will hold, that culture will be sustainable. That, but yes, you did. Thank you.
Anyone else before I go? Okay, I'll jump in. Thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. And I've, some teachers actually have kind of reached out with questions and comments and concerns, so I'm gonna ask a couple of these. So in regards to the Apples program, one of the questions they had is how are you sure the mentors are good? And what I mean by that is I've talked to ones that have been mentors and ones that have been mentored, and what they say, you know, some have had some great experiences. You know, one had indicated to me that the mentor really, you know, for a lot of the questions was, you gotta kind of figure it out for yourself. So who kind of tracks that, as I said, who is responsible for that to make sure that these mentors are truly doing their job?
I'll take that. The responsibility really lies with the school-based administrator. Although we provide the training and the outside support, and we may, like, we check the logs of the things that they were doing, that they told us the mentor was doing with the Apples teacher, that really has to rest with the school-based administrator. It's typically an assistant principal at the site. There are some principals who choose to embrace all of the new teachers at their school, but that's not, that's not always true. And hopefully, and I'll say it that way because I can only speak when I was a principal, so I know what happened in my building, but my hope is that if the conversations are happening the way they're supposed to be between the new, the newest teachers in our buildings and our administrators or the mentor, that somebody has figured out that that person is struggling. If they're in a school that has a If they're in a school that has a PCT, Dr. Martin talked about this earlier, if they're in a school that has PCTs assigned, they also are working probably with those new teachers hand-in-hand and may not necessarily be their mentor, if you will. So there should be, if they're in a Title 1 school with PCTs, they should be getting even more support. So I'm not sure, you know, which school. Honestly, that breaks my heart a little bit because what I know is that first year is so incredibly important to our newest teachers and particularly in Lee County. Because I know you, Mr. Dodig talked about this, we have a lot of career changers who need so much more because they have never, they didn't go through a typical education program. Hence why we have new to teaching academies. We just had one for a winter session for people because we recognize in professional development how much support they need. So I think I said a lot to say it really rests with the school-based administrator.
Okay, okay. Another question, and this is now from the mentor side. They're wondering if there's any ability to have a little bit more structure. For example, you know, what they should do month-to-month, for example. One of them suggested maybe August and September is classroom management time or something like that. They, they kind of want to see, and this was another person mentioned as well, if there's any ability to have a little bit more guidance or structure with how they plan for the, for their mentoring. And if that's something needed to come back on, that's fine as well. It was just a general comment.
Yeah, absolutely. We're always committed to continuous improvement, so we provide the initial training for mentors and then the ongoing training for mentors. And we're always happy to look at the survey data and take recommendations and make responses to that. And we have some great resources available to them to provide that structure.
Last one in regards to kind of leadership opportunities. And Ms. Morgan had talked about this and Dr. Green here, and, you know, identifying leaders. And it seems like there's obviously a lot, lot in principle and it kind of depends, I think on, how do you make sure that these, these principals, people are identifying leaders? I've heard this, as I said, from other teachers, you know, some feel like they've, they've really tried to talk about and want to go on to something else, but if the principal doesn't seem on board or, or willing to go that far. For me, as I said, from what I've seen, for example, I just visited one of the schools on your list and they were, I'll name it Challenger Middle, and their succession planning, their bench just gone through was amazing. I swear they have, you know, the plan in place for pretty much anything that happens and that was really cool to see. How do you make sure schools are doing that consistently?
Well, one of the things is talking to our schools about leadership expectations. Another shift that you're beginning to see is moving away from, I'm going to borrow a phrase, sort of the nuts and bolts of bringing principals to talk on a monthly basis to really discussing what the role of a principal is as an instructional leader. We can communicate the need for a fire drill, the need for safety compliance, the need to take care of your occupational issues related to a safety inspection because the occupant can unplug an extension cord pretty easily. And I don't want my principals spending time on that. They have APs, they have a building supervisor. The reality is changing the discussion of what we spend our time with. Many of you have taken the opportunity to go down with me and take a look at the data room regarding the graduation chats. We are in mid-process of working with every one of our schools, in a sense, almost like the three principals from RCSI schools presented to you. They are, each school is coming in and talking about data. One of the things that we will talk to our principals about is leadership development. Who on your staff is showing signs? Who's just a student or a, I'm sorry, a young person who's showing the capabilities that you might think down the line they could be a dean? We want to try to identify them early in the pipeline as possible because there's several different reasons. One is that we want to start to grow our own leaders and we need to be able to do that and we need to do it with a framework in mind of what we want the end to look like using a Covey principal. But the other piece is by identifying and giving people the opportunity to examine a career path also stabilizes them. It also gives them that idea, and we've talked about this, purpose and impact. It gives them a sense that their purpose is larger than what they're currently doing and they may be able to move forward. And then we have to help teach them that while the impact is harder to see as a superintendent or a building-level principal or a dean, it's just, it's different than being in the classroom and watching the light bulbs turn on. You know, I was in classrooms today that were just amazing to, to just be in their classrooms for a short period of time, what those teachers were doing. I'm not sure even those teachers know that at the end of the day that they're having the impact that, that they're having. Because kids rarely walk up to you and say, thank you for teaching me, you know, the quadratic equation today. They don't, I mean, but later on, they're thankful for the relationship they had with people. So part of that leadership development is about building that feeling, looking at the data. And when we identify a cohort of leaders, examining it through those lenses to ensure that we have the right types of people, male, female, that we have the right level of diversity. If we don't, going out and recruiting it and finding it so that we can build a pool of leaders moving forward. So it, it, Ms. Morgan has said it very well, and, and we had a board meeting about it recently. Culture takes time and it takes consistency. And, and that's, that's something that we have to get to. And by using high reliability models as a standard, we can build the, the consistency in the pipeline each step of the way in preparing them. It'll never be like a gear breaking in a car and just replacing the gear. It's, it's not that simple, but it should be closer to that type of interchange, interchangeability than it currently is. I don't know if that answers your question or not, sir.
Yes, yeah. And again, just like you were reiterating and with Ms. Morgan, again, culture, and I think that's a big thing. As I said, some schools you can just walk into and instantaneously just tell what's leaders and, you know, as I said, right when I went in Challenger, it wasn't just the leadership, it was the teachers. You could just see it across the board and that really blew me away. So anybody else have any other questions or comments? Ms. Juvenelli?
Thank you. That actually puts a lot of things in perspective. And so it made me question, how are we identifying, like, other staff, like, paras that possibly could be a teacher at some point? And but how do we help them get there? How do we have, you know, our principals identifying those, their skills that they could further educate themselves and be a teacher someday? Because I'm thinking of retention and how do we, you know, grow in our own? And that's like taking them from that spot to where we, what we really need, you know, certified teachers. Thank you.
Darn red button, so little. That was, that is a great question. And actually, in the recruitment side of the house, they do address that for paras specifically. They send out interest in that. I know we check, we used to check to see if they had a degree, what it was in, and see if there's any way we could convert them, if you will, to be a teacher, the same way we do with guest teachers. We go back, we look at their degrees and sometimes cold-call, if you will, to see if they would like to be. And to your point, I, I think one of the things that principals sometimes forget is the influence they could have on somebody to dream big to be a teacher if you're a para or if you're a custodian or whatever that is, or even a teacher to dream that I could be the leader of a school building and, or, or I could be a teacher leader. It takes work to do that identification and we have some people that are just masters at it and we're continuing to work with other leaders, to your point, to help them see the light in someone, to help move that forward for their dreams than their goals as well. But we do on the recruitment side of the house, that is what we do to try to get our paras to move, to move forward.
We're in the process of developing, in my mind, like a grow-your-own when it comes to that. I was introduced to at least two, I want to say three, but I don't want to make a mistake. But I can verify that two at Franklin Park, I was introduced today, who are in the process of trying to move from the paraprofessional to the teacher ranks. What we have to figure out in our legislative platform for this year is set, but one of the things we have to look for is a way for that paraprofessional to do their student teach without having to move building. I want to repeat that. A paraprofessional who makes certain amount per hour can't really afford to give up their job and go to another school for six to 10 weeks to complete their senior teach internship. We have to find a way, and I've challenged both the bargaining team and my professional development team and our recruitment team, to find a way where that individual, number one, if they were at Franklin Park Elementary, for instance, they could, when their student teach came around, they could do that at Franklin Park. That keeps them from having to change jobs, you know, potentially incurring additional costs getting to and from work. But the next piece is their job is really critical to us, not only becoming a teacher, but also how do we backfill or dare I say, overfill a paraprofessional position that would allow the paraprofessional job to continue to be done while we give this person a chance to secure their teaching credentials? That's the challenge right now, but once you identify the challenge, you just start to figure out ways around it. And it may get, we might have to get creative, but I trust my team. We can, we certainly can be creative, we'll also be legal. So I think those are the other important thing to stress.
So thank you, because that was one of the things is identifying, you know, future, future teachers or future leaders, really. It's, and, and right down to the level of, you know, the, the paras or even, I know we're trying to do it even as our students. So it, and we had just, it's like thinking way far in advance, but in the moment. And so I know I've, I've spoken to some teachers and they can see the potential in, like, their para that they have. And so then they try to, you know, guide them in that pathway. But not everybody sees that and not every principal is, are seeing it on that level. And I don't know how to, like, that was my really, my point as well is identifying those people that are, are great candidates for our future and, and are thriving in our schools. So, and so that, and that, and I'll just leave it with this. I mean, I think this is a great, it's investing in our employees and I think that's, you can't get any better than investment in our actual employees that we have. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Harold, Director, sorry, it's my, Harold, Dr. Sanon and Dr. Martin. Thank you so much for this presentation, I appreciate it. Next up is public comment. Attorney DePree Bruno, can you please address public comment?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. School Board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the Board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda. If you completed a public comment card, please provide it to staff. The public comment will be held at the podium in the center aisle and in the front. Please be advised that the Board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing but such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call your names, five speakers at a time, and please follow staff's direction when lining up. Mr. Chairman, there are two individuals who would like to speak to the Board on Leadership Arts Integration and North Fort Myers High Academy.
Okay. Is there anyone else out in the audience that wishes to sign up for public comment that has not? I'm not seeing any. Just want to remind Attorney DePree Bruno, can you just go over what the topics that are permissible on public comment and briefing?
Only those that have been addressed at the briefing. So this is about leadership.
Okay. Thank, okay. Thank you. Can you pre, please proceed and call the name?
Well, the following individuals, please line up. Caleb Lohman and Eileen DeLuca.
Is there a, oh, good, we're on time. My name is Caleb Lohman. I am the proud parent of three youth that have been through North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts. I'm also a certified financial planner who owns his own business here in town and I'm a former board member for the North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts Foundation and also for the Sanibel School Fund. The reason to come today before you is to be able to talk about leadership and how that functions into art and integration, specifically at North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts and to point out some of the concerns that we have relative to the changes that we're making as they will affect both leadership in the school and future, future access to school for the children that are going to be attending there. So to be able to bring that into a three-minute comment, we're going to bring that down and try to boil it. We've talked about today and some of the comments that have been made here are actually very impactful to what our concerns are. We talked about specifically from, from Mrs. Morgan, that we need a safe and collaborative environment that has the culture or the confidence that the culture will hold that has been created in our institutions. That happens from the leadership level, but that also carries through from the student level. And that means once students have adopted a, a certain culture in a school, it's important that we maintain that. Specifically at North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts, if you're not aware, we, they have been able to, and to be able to, to help that culture to be able to be indoctrinated in their students, but that that takes a significant amount of time, not just because of the arts integration, but because the skill level that the arts integration requires from the students. So when you look at that, and you can use examples, every year we put on and have through the, through the foundation and through the school, we do the Nutcracker event. That takes 200 students that are involved in that. It takes a lot of work and effort and dedication, which is cultivated by that leadership, both internally from the, the principal, but also through the teachers and then also through the dedication of the, of the students and their parents. That type of leadership, that type of educational opportunity is unique in our county and I would say it's unique here in the state of Florida. And it's something that's worth for us to be able to defend and to be able to look at. I'm a full supporter of the change that's coming forward in the proximity plan and you as leadership are, are making those changes to be able to see how that's going to affect. And we have definite issues that we need to address. But one of the things that we need to look at is how that's going to affect the pool of available talent, okay, and school culture that's going to happen at North Fort Myers of the Academy of the Arts. For that purpose, we've drafted a letter, I think, to the school board. Members have received that letter and we've made basically two small requests. One is that we continue for busing for both C and Zone C and B for the district, for that school. And second, that we allow the same type of student placement through assigned seats that would be available to the school. So that is in a letter and we have copies of that letter here.
If you would, if you wouldn't mind providing it to our board secretary. Thank you.
Superintendent Bernier, Chair Fisher, members of the board, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Eileen DeLuca and I'm the parent of three Lee County students, proud parent of the students. One of my children previously attended North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts Elementary and Middle School. Again, I was glad to listen to the presentation today on leadership. Some of the terms I heard both superintendent and board member speak about is culture and consistency, impact of our programs on students in our schools, achievement and having the right level of diversity in schools. So these are all things that I'm glad to hear you all talk about today. I understand the task that you're engaging in with the proximity plan is, is a difficult task, but it does speak to leadership and affecting all those areas, including culture, consistency, impact, achievement, and right level of diversity. One of my children, as I stated earlier, went through North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts, but two did not. The arts are not for every student. Had the, the proposed redrawn districts been drawn up or, sorry, proximity districts been drawn up, my child would not have had access to the arts program, which as I told former principal, Dr. Santini, Dr. Tom Millens, and Andrea Guns, on several occasions transformed toward life and the life of a diverse population of students that she now calls her friends and family, having gone through this program together. The school is not broken as stated. Arts is not for every student and if there's not the opportunity to audition for the program, I, I fear that the culture will change, the academic achievement of the students will change, and it won't have the right level of diversity, I spoke about earlier. I hope that you will consider the, the proposed plan that many members of the community have sent to the Board of Trustees to ensure that the audition process is still available for students so that we can have students who are attracted to the arts have access to those programs from a larger part of our district and also recognize, for example, in the case of my child, that the, having a focus on the arts and an interest in the arts as a student does not mean they're going to achieve the competencies that we expect all graduates to have. My daughter, Jamie, who's now in high school, so I don't really have skin in the game. I'm not trying to look at the district borders for my children. They're all in high school now, but I know there's other parents who are in the situation I was. She is a straight A student. You can look up her records. I know you have access. And you can also see that she's in the 99 percentile for the SAT, science, math, all of the subject areas are competencies she's achieved because her engagement and interest in school as a a, as a person who has an attraction to the arts was facilitated and fostered by that school. So, limiting that district to a very small population of students who may or may not be interested in the arts, you know, from my point of view, would change the culture consistency, impact, and opportunity for achievement. Thank you for.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes public comment.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the agenda is good of the order and board comment. I'm going to start with Ms. Juvenelli.
Thank you. So, I have to ask, Dr. Bernier, North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts, can that not be a magnet program? That's what, you had told me that, that this school could be a magnet program, and then they would have an opportunity to have audition seats, and that would, wouldn't that achieve what the, everyone is trying to achieve here?
There is always a possibility for our school building to move into what I perceive, and I think you perceive, because we've had individual conversations about it, what a magnet program is. I, I, I just hedge for a moment, because everybody has a definite definition of what a magnet is. But to the speakers today, could we legitimately look beginning as early as next year, or as early as this enrollment period goes? Yes, we could start looking at that. We've promised that to the North Fort Myers Academy community. We did it at a public session. I personally have met with the former principal, told him the same thing. We need to get the proximity plan off the ground, but then we can look. And I think one of the other things, I think it's important for the community to know, is we are still maintaining the transportation routes for the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. So, if there's a parent who has a sixth, seventh, and eighth grader who wants their child from Cape Coral, who's at kindergarten, to have access, they'll have access and transportation. That, that won't be subject to conversation until next year with the middle school, and I think that's when we have to come together as a community and decide what we want North Fort Myers Academy to ultimately be. If it's a magnet program, the way I think that means, is that means students from across the entire school district of Lee County could apply to go to school there. They would go through an audition process in order to do that. We would then try to set up what we call a spoken hub. So, if you think of an old wagon wheel, there would be, the hub would be where parents would have to get their students to, for our transportation to come get them and bring them. So that we don't go all over the whole county to get everybody, we would go to a specific hub, a centralized location, pick up those magnet students. We may be able to do that. We'd have to look, work with our transportation system, so, yeah. I have told all of you privately, I have shared publicly in the meetings, the future for North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts is not to ruin the gem in our crown. It, it is a diamond, it's an emerald. We have lots of emeralds in our system, but this one in particular has, has, has a very consistent place, and we have to look now for what we can do to set up proximity, but then look to see what occurs. I've shared with all of you also, as parents will have the opportunity, should you pass that this evening, the proximity plan, then people will grandfather in. We know there could be an impact to the school based upon grandfathering. Dr. Malloy has been charged by me, he's going to look at it a whole lot more than weekly, but on a weekly basis, giving me the percentage of parents who are choosing to grandfather in, meaning they're still going to come to the school, but they are making the choice because it's so important to them to find a manner and means to transport their children. I don't have the crystal ball. I can't tell you exactly how that's going to play out for North, but I, North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts, let me make sure I'm very clear, because North can mean something very different in this community. North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts. But we are committed to ensuring that next year, we ensure that that magnet program and that fine arts program continues and thrives, and we will build that together with the community.
Thank you very much for that. I think that's really good, and the clarity is, was excellent, so thank you so much. I just have one more thing. We recently, the last meeting, we voted on accepting of findings to an investigation that is still ongoing, and that was given to local, I believe, local law enforcement and some other agencies. However, I found out that it did not go to the USDOE, and they had prior investigations, and I think that the, and I wanted to bring this up publicly so that the rest of the Board is aware, that it didn't go to everybody, and give guidance and direction to the Board Attorney or the Superintendent, whoever sent that out, to send that to the USDOE and the OIG. I know one in particular was Homeland Security. There was a gentleman that has, would like to have that copy of that.
So, Ms. Juvenelli, I'm hearing two things. One is USIOG, Homeland Security, and the US Department of Education?
Yeah.
I am not aware of everywhere this report has been sent, but if it has not been sent to those locations, we could certainly look into making sure that's sent. And then the second piece was somebody is looking for a copy of something, or is that all related?
That's what I'm talking about, the investigation. They did not receive it.
Homeland Security did not receive it?
Right, right. And that was, no, a prior investigation that they did. This is, this is actually part, part of it. There's information in there that would be helpful that they did not receive earlier.
I know what you're referencing. So, yes, we can ensure that the final report that our investigator produced gets back to the original investig, one of the original.
Correct, which we do not have copies of, so, yes.
Yes, ma'am. I will certainly advise with legal counsel to ensure that we're not violating any aspect of all these cases, the multiple laws that surround them, but if it's appropriate for us to send that to those organizations, and it's the will of the Board, then I will make that happen.
Well, I would like to know if it doesn't, if that's, if that becomes an issue. Thank you.
100% ma'am.
That's it, thank you.
Ms. Petrika?
Thank you. So, I'm just going to update my colleagues on a few things that have been going on. ITF Insurance Task Force met yet again. I love that task force, but man, they like to meet. They're getting together all the time. I've gushed enough to you guys about the level of expertise in that room. They continue to do really good, really strong work. Nothing really new, I mean, they updated us on some pending legislation and potential impacts on us, and it's interesting because that, it's not the kind of legislation we would typically follow, because it's not a direct impact on education, but an indirect impact because it affects employee benefits. Next is the District Advisory Council. We had Dr. Malloy come in and present on the proximity plan, and he knocked it out of the park. I've, I've told the Superintendent, I expected significant pushback from families. I mean, you look across the nation, when you're redrawing boundaries for schools, you have packed boardrooms, and that is simply not occurring here. Why? Because it's, it's been a process that's been delayed a couple of times, but in those delays, we were able to hear what the community wanted, take that into consideration, and really put together a plan, I think, that is causing as little disruption as possible. There is not a thing about this plan that Dr. Malloy doesn't know, which is why I think I saw you sitting with our two North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts guests, because I assume you've had conversations with them as well? No? Well?
I don't think you've talked to them.
You will afterwards. I'm just really impressed with, with what you've done, and, you know, when that vote comes in front of me tonight, I will, obviously, I was concerned about our, our guests' comments today, but I'm satisfied with the Superintendent's response. In addition, I had an executive district advisory council meeting last night. We're putting together topics, so if there's anything that you guys want, DAC to sort of vet and provide some feedback, let me know, because I have a, a short meeting coming up with Dr. Cupid McCoy to make sure the subjects going in front of DAC are relevant and timely. FSBA Legislative Committee meets every Friday, and they sort of update us on where bills are going, and HP1, as we all know, is, is a big change, and it's going to have a significant impact on public school districts across the state. They're really stressing the importance of transparency, accountability, and predictability. Predictability is really the key here. It's very difficult for us as a district to predict funding when we have no idea how much money is going to be going out of the district. So, in conversations, I know that, you know, FSBA is not going to take any kind of a public stand on this, but if we could think about how transparency, accountability, and predictability would impact us, and have those conversations with our legislators, that might be helpful, if that's something you agree with. I find the FSBA Legislative Committee to be very, very helpful. They're really good at walking a line that does not offend either side of an issue, and not taking a stand on issues that could potentially be, be offensive to one side or another. So, that's really good. The other thing I want you to know about FSBA is, at our June conference, they're going to have an artificial intelligence expert give the keynote address, which I thought was really timely, based on what I brought up at the table last time. You know, I'm afraid of academic integrity, but this is real life and the future, so how do we, how do we embrace this as educational institutions, as opposed to just sort of being afraid and being old like I am, and not understanding it? So, I, I wanted to put that on your radar, because I thought that was really exciting. And my last thing is kind of a, oh, you're the Chair. My last thing is kind of a good of the order thing, if I may.
Yes.
A little, thank you. A little bit of background for my new colleagues and for the Superintendent. Superintendent, when I first joined the Board, not, maybe not first joined, maybe a year or two in, I texted a picture to the Superintendent of my dining room table. It was completely covered in forms that I had to complete for my students to go, my, my own children to go back to school. It was, the number of trees that I killed with my four kids was ridiculous, and it was super annoying from a customer service perspective that we couldn't do those forms online. That has since been solved. We, I sit down at night before school starts, and it maybe takes me 15 minutes to do all four of my kids' forms, and it's a beautiful, wonderful thing. I had a, a bad parent form experience the other day. I was filling out the FHSAA EL3, which was changed by the FHSAA in June of '21 to no longer require a notary signature. The parent signature, parent no longer needs to notarize that, we can just sign it with the student. Notary is no longer required, but for some reason in Lee County, the notary is still required. I did contact the Executive Director of FHSAA. He said we are the only county in the entire state that requires it, and he said that the reason why they did away with it is because all the notary does is say the person who signed the form has the same name as, you know, what's typed, it doesn't, it's not swearing to the veracity of the information on the form. There's really no utility in a notary whatsoever. So, my point is, customer service, I'm a parent, it's bad enough that I have to, you know, download the, the form, fill it out by hand, and, and sign it, and then upload it back into the system, but now I have to go the, go the extra mile of having a notary for a form that doesn't need to be notarized. So, if we could take a look at that, that would be awesome.
We'll do more than take a look at it.
Thank you so much. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. Okay, well, I, you know, I was just blessed with the Construction Advisory Committee at our last meeting, and lo and behold, as I was walking out the door, I realized that that was the night that the meeting was. So, I, that was my first meeting with the Construction Advisory Committee. They were happy to have someone there, and they spoke about the renovation of Riverdale, so that was a lot of their conversation on where they stand in, as well as all the other areas that we're moving towards. Also, they were, they had a question about using students for, from our vocational schools for, kind of like on-the-job training, where the students who are, of course, who are adults, they're 18 years old, they could go out and work for these general contractors, for electrician, they're getting on-the-job training, as well as being paid, and then getting credits for their services as well. So, I did contact the vocational schools, they are all in, sent that information to the Construction Advisory Secretary, and they've put all that information out, because we absolutely do offer that, so that's a good thing, because of the fact that there's so much shortage out there right now. And then the other things, I think, North Fort Myers Academy for being here, I was, I attended Madagascar, it was phenomenal. My grandson was there with me, who attends Edison Park School of the Arts, and two completely different schools with, but they still have the art programs, but you can, you can tell that, you can see the difference. They were amazing. I think there were 91 students that participated in that program, in that one show, and it was the fourth and fifth grade that performed that show that night. Also, I had the opportunity to do Art Fest, which I always go down there and, you know, spend the, the weekend with the kids, our students. We had several students participate in the chalk art, which, we had 40 teams of three who just took over Henry and just did beautiful drawings. It's a shame that they will wash away eventually. I wish I could preserve them, but I just, Gateway's first year, they did receive the Sunny and Sparkling Award. Lehigh came, Lehigh Senior had, I believe, seven or eight teams, but Team Six came in first, second was Dunbar Team One, and third was Cypress Lake. So, I wanted to really give a shout out for that. And what I thought was interesting is that the theme this year was in harmony. So, as you walked around and you spoke to the students, what they perceive as harmony was completely different from each other. So, it was just beautiful to see what, you know, where they were at, and how they felt about creating their, their artwork. Also, they had the recyclables, so they had, that was middle schools, so the middle school kids did recyclables, so our trash, our bottle caps, our plastic, everything. And I was at one of the schools last week, and I, actually, I think, I think Mr. Persson was with me at one of the schools that we seen, at North Fort Myers Academy, I guess it was that school. And they were making little, had little bottle caps, and cutting up bottles, and creating these beautiful flowers, and just, it was just beautiful. So, to see the end result was amazing of what they did. So, we had several of our schools, I think four schools participated, and I was trying to find their, the names, but I cannot find the names of them, but they were excellent. And then we also had our, our students for under 20 with their different portraits and paintings, and the Chick-fil-A dress this year, so it was out of recyclable, but it was all Chick-fil-A cups, and it was beautiful dress. But it just goes to show, like, the talent and what we, and what our schools do offer, and to see our students there, and to see everyone in there, and they even had a tent for where the little ones could go in. I was too old to go in, I was not allowed in the tent, because you had to be tenant under to walk into this tent with $5 to buy a painting. So, it's, it does a lot for our students. And we also had several of our students from Pine, Pinewood's and different elementaries who were on center stage performing. So, it was nice to see all of that taking place. So, that's how I spent my weekend, and that's my report. So, thank you.
Mr. Persons?
Yes, I'd just like to give a little shout out to the Audit Committee. I met with them for the first time. They went through the organization. The Audit Committee is, most people think they just sort of go over financials, but the Audit Committee is looking for any risks anywhere within the district. It could be cybersecurity, it could be different policies. Anyway, they do great work, they're a great group of guys, very knowledgeable, and looking forward to working with them. That's all.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
I just, in regards to the, the workshop or briefing we had earlier, Dr. Bernier, I was highly impressed with the leadership and the direction we were headed there. Just wanted to add that, you know, the more support that we give our leaders, and the more we create that culture from the top down or the bottom up, which however you want to say that, the more support they have without judgment and building trust, the better teachers we're going to have in our classrooms, the better leaders we're going to have in our schools, and at the end of the day, it's going to provide a much more positive learning environment for our children. So, I just wanted to commend the team on that. So, thank you, that's all I have for now.
Ms. Morgan?
I have nothing. I just want to compliment Ms. Langford Fleming on what she just said, so, thank you. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. A couple of things, real briefly. I did a tour and a walkthrough of Cape Coral Elementary about a week and a half ago, had a great, a great time there. They had their frosty run, in fact, so the kids were all excited to be outside. It was a little cold for, for outside for that, but I had a great time over there, great school. Thank you to Principal Osterholm for that. Also, last week, I did a tour as well of Challenger, so, and that was. And that was really inspiring, just to walk through and really talk to some of the people in the aforementioned leadership positions, so I'm excited to continue on the district. This morning, I attended the Drug House Odyssey that is hosted by the Drug Free Coalition of Southwest Florida, and as well as it's put on different scenarios for kids essentially to warn them of outcomes. For example, drinking and driving, those things, and has law enforcement and first responders even had like kind of a mock courtroom that brought me back a little bit to my juvenile attorney days, so... But they did a great job with that. It's continuing on tomorrow. They're going to have a family night, in fact, tomorrow, so I'd encourage everyone, if they're able to attend, to go to that. So that's all I have at the moment. Dr. Bernier, do you have any comment?
I have something that I think you just all need to be aware of. We've been looking out ahead, and some of you have expressed an interest regarding March One. March One, there's a delegation event here in town, which conflicts currently with our work session schedule, so I am working through the chair with your support staff to try to reschedule or refine that, either moving it to the morning, giving us a three-hour window, or picking the eighth or the ninth. The other thing that you could expect to be contacted about is March 22nd is our second work session. That is the Wednesday of spring break. I didn't know what your personal schedules were. No need to go into them at this time, but we'll be finding out whether we could have a quorum for that particular day, because there are some things that I think we should cover. I just wanted you to be aware. Other than that, I can save my other comments for this evening.
Thank you. Attorney DePree Bruno, do you have any comments?
I do not, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll have a student performance at 5:45 tonight, followed by our action meeting at 6 o'clock. Seeing no other business to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned at 2:27 PM. Thank you.